Call meeting order, roll call.
There was.
Yep.
Right here.
Yep.
Leeny?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
No public forum? Consent agenda? Any additions?
Uh, no additions, that building permit is signed.
Is everybody happy about that now?
No, this one's out, at the trade department. We'll talk about the other one.
Oh, okay. Motion on a consent agenda. Second?
I'll do it.
Roll call.
Trader?
Yes.
Leeny?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance four, four, five. It's your time to read this.
It's the last reading of the ordinance and, uh, no additional comments on it.
Think I made the motion last month, so I didn't make it.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Leeny?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Okay, grant application for Sack County.
We've talked about some enhancements down at the farmer's market area. Page five. This is kind of the idea Jenny Boss was in talking about before and we had kind of refined the idea a little bit so that we could put some cost estimates to it. But as you look at that, just note that there's, there's a concrete walkway that's proposed to go all the way through the, through the lot east and west. And then there's these ten by ten concrete pads. Uh, the, the market participants can, can then set up on these ten by ten concrete pads. And, uh, so there's four of those up towards the main street. And then as you work your way back, there's a ten by twenty pad that's proposed to have two picnic tables and a bench on it and, uh, has, has a tree in it. And these, uh, would be permanent tables and benches there. So that when it's not used for farmer's market area, it just becomes, uh, like a pocket park. People would be able to utilize these tables and benches at any time. Just as you finish going back to the, to the east, another ten by ten concrete areas back there, there's proposed to be a, a light and some electric outlets in that open area of the sidewalk. And then a little bit of crushed rock on the back. Some ornamental grass plantings on the front and back sides and that would be the, uh, the main amount of plantings that are involved with this. Around those concrete pads, we had initially proposed that we would, would want to put pavers. Got a cost estimate on the pavers. It's just extraordinarily high to do, to do pavers. Cost estimate on doing the paver work was sixteen thousand dollars. So, um, instead this proposes to put down a cocoa bean seed, uh, mulch. And it's a, a really small textured mulch that, uh, that Jenny Boss had suggested would, would be of good use there. So, you know, the mulch is intended for people to walk on. That's, that's the idea. Those are the walking paths.
Is it climbable? The mulch?
I don't know.
Better find out. People are gonna throw cigarettes.
Okay.
We had, we had one of the bump outs catching fire last summer because of the most somebody's threw a cigarette in there or whatever happened, I don't know. We certainly don't want this going on.
Especially with the burn bad. What about, does that mulch dry out with that bloat?
This stuff supposedly keeps as well as anything. Anyway, I'm just taking kind of Jenny's word on that. I, I just don't really know. She, it was her, her suggestion.
I don't like to be a throwing water in the fire, but I, I, why couldn't we like do the front half, see how it comes up before we get two chairs? I'm all for doing it.
Just in the first four?
Well, the first four squares, let's see how it works. At least we're not, you know, filling it red and all in one thing.
Are we gonna have luxuries all these kind of things?
No, it's, there's, back in that back planting area, there was proposed to be, uh, a light and have some outlets there. And that would be it.
I mean, you're talking, if we're on the front ones that thirty foot, forty foot drop cord they run.
No.
Is there any way we just get like a four by four, kind of what we have with bump outs?
We could make it work, whatever. Power comes, looking at the picture, it's either back or there's a transport back.
Well, I mean, if we're trying to get customers, you know, and we can't especially do the front half, or if there's only, you know, it'd look funny if you only got two vendors and they need power and no way in the back and there's nobody up front beginning or towards the end of the year.
No, we're done.
Sure, we must have good line.
I would say so.
True.
We could, we could put power wherever you want. It was back there, just, the main reason being that a light was there and then some was just out of the way.
I just hate to see a bunch of drop cords for a long trip over.
I did. I had, uh, quotes on doing the pavers and that was, like I say, about sixteen thousand dollars. To do a colored concrete was somewhere around seven thousand dollars. So if you wanted to say, look, we're doing only part of it, maybe it is that we could do, uh, the, the concrete pads and then do colored concrete then too and that would, should take care of, uh, really any of the problems on the front half.
So, Mayor, you suggested the first four here.
Why the first four, I don't know, maybe to be part of that. I just, I'd just say it's, just do it all big and then mark, uh, a ton of market crap out in the year, but we've got enough. Not that it will, but it'd be a lot easier to add on later than to do. God, we shouldn't have done that.
I guess.
It's doing something.
Sure, I can, I can certainly see that. The one, one thing that I would ask of you is maybe if we could put a little bit of that, what is that, ten by twenty? Just put enough for a bench pad there and, uh, put benches on, on them, uh, one bench on each side and you still get some use out of it even when it's not.
So this is all based on if we get some grant money, is that kind of what we're looking at too?
Yes, so if you look at, uh, page seven, it's the cost estimate on it, total estimates at twenty thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. Then you look at where the proposed revenues could come from, half of the project, we, we would apply for half of the project in, uh, Sack County Dallas funds. Trees forever paid for the trees. I get this Department of Public Health Wellness Grant. Grant's gonna be for ten thousand dollars. And we had talked about, kind of earmarking a portion of that grant to go towards, towards this farmer's market area. You know, trying to encourage, uh, fruits and vegetables and whatnot as, as being helped. Bench and table sponsors, we're, we're going to have those sponsored at two hundred fifty dollars each. Some soft match for labor, uh, at minimum, minimum, that, that soft match involves installing electric. And that the concrete price is actually a bid price to have, uh, those specialties installed. It's a contracted price for it. So that's the other way to look at that, on matching it, is whether the city would want to do that. We can use the labor costs of soft match. And then there's a question mark there if the city would be willing to put in any, any funds into it. And as you look further down, there's still some additional fundraisers that can happen. I think it'd be a nice application to the Gilrenzi Foundation. Talk to the men's club, which we have not done. We'll, we'll talk through those options on picnic tables. They can save thirty-three hundred dollars, uh, by, by using concrete ones instead of metal ones. Roughly four thousand dollars savings to have the, uh, city staff and saw that. Have Lon make that market square sign. That eleven hundred and nine dollars for the market square sign is a bid price from a welding shop and, and a welding shop in Odbol had bid that. And Lon looked at that designing, said, boy, that's something that he sure could do and it'd be a nice winter project for him, so. Maybe have Lon do that and save, save a few bucks there.
Is that metal?
The sign is proposed to be metal. Not aluminum, I think it's steel.
What sort of commitment is there from the organizers themselves that they'll stay involved and engaged? I mean, kind of the down point. I mean, that seems to be the thing that makes it or not, right? Is that you have proper organizers and planners and people that can get other vendors here?
Right. And what's their commitment to it? I, I don't know that. That they have a commitment any further than what they've done this past year. Yeah, they certainly hope to, hope to continue that and expand on it. The other commitment that Jenny certainly is willing to make is that between her and Emily both are, Emily McNeese, they're both the master gardeners, so they would want to have a lot to do with the upkeep of the area as far as any of the plantings, that type of stuff. So they are committed on that end.
I mean, if we do part of it, may attract some others to come if it looks like we're really involved.
Well, that's the other thing is, is if you wanted to look at doing part of it, again, we got this Gilrenzi grant, grant that comes up, uh, in July. Timing on that could be good if we see some success with, uh, with the part that's done.
Have they ever gotten any from that?
The library has. We, we applied for, we received ten thousand dollars for them for that library project.
But by July, we better have the damn thing done by spring if we're gonna use it for spring, don't we?
Well, that's the idea. That's why, that's one of the reasons why we look at it, at contracting that concrete work, to, to do it in the spring.
So you're gonna just cut this, cut the sidewalk off in half too, then?
Nah, I'd suggest the sidewalk oughta go all the way through.
Gonna try to do a street board part, most of the way, right?
At least they'd be using that and helping. And it might be a little offshoot for the part that people want to meet up and, you think, it might be a, you'd get there.
Go ahead and compare it to the empty lot.
I think if we did the first half, you know, you have four concrete spots and there's some people that wouldn't mind starting up on dirt. You know, that would take care of our regulars for sure. If you get a few that should sit on dirt for a summer and figure out if you get busy on, then do that.
Do they pay the fence again?
I, I don't know. I say, I don't think they do. But if it's, then it just offsets a little of the advertising.
I think it's advertising stuff, I don't know.
I was curious what the money went for, I mean.
Cause somebody asked me if they were supposed to be paying it. That's all we're gonna do.
Okay, yeah.
So what do we need, a motion to send a grant application?
Yeah, if you wanted, if you want this to be the front half, we would figure it the front half. I, I would ask you that we could do a little bench pad in, east of the, of the second concrete one and do a couple benches there. That way it's, again, it's used for more than just the, the farmer's market area, but other than that.
You'd vault it down so they didn't end up on Main Street?
We would.
So, we're talking about running the path all the way through?
Path all the way through. Two sets of concrete, uh, pads in the front and probably a, a bench pad that's maybe five feet wide. And some electric, some electric up front. The rest of it, we would.
And a sign.
And a sign, yeah. The rest of it, I, we would just propose to try to keep it in grass. What do you want to do for, try the mulch?
I'm a big fan of the mulch.
Uh, see, if we're just doing the front half, we can try, we maybe, uh, do a, a colored concrete.
Let's try the colored concrete, cause the mulch will end up on fire and the few blocks will end up on the windshield.
Yeah, we'll all end up on the main street.
Just wanna make something that can haul away.
I don't know how that, I think if you had that color, that would stand off the main street. Look like it's part of the farm.
Looks like we did it the same way.
I'll make that motion to, uh, for that, right?
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Paul and Ron?
Yes.
Leeny?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Community coordinator?
I, I gotta think through this a little, um, I'm still back on that grant. I need to think through this a little bit on, on what the costs are gonna be and how, and how we come up with all of the match dollars.
Is that gonna figure out first?
Yeah, but I gotta come up with money somehow, you know? It may be that we would just commit a lot more of that wellness grant up front to be the match and then we'll kind of reevaluate from there to see where we can come up with some different match monies. But I need to show match when I put this grant application in.
For the grant, uh?
For the Sack County grant?
Whether it's just, we almost think it's ten thousand, it's been to get people happy.
For wellness initiatives.
Well, I don't see no reason why our labor can't do ninety percent of it. The only, the only thing is, is I don't wanna do like, we say that's what we're gonna do and then we do like we did last year and we go to port at sidewalk and there's somebody else. Well, that ain't what we were gonna do in the first place. So if that's what we're gonna say we're gonna do, then that's what we're gonna do.
I think time, time wise, if this, you know, the market's gonna wanna be up and running shortly after the fall, we would have trouble getting this done by that time.
Why?
Just because spring is so very, very busy with everything else that's, that's being done.
Well, then let's, then let's figure out paying for it then and let's, don't bullshit ourselves and say we're gonna do it if we're not gonna do it.
Once we figure out a plan, huh, we could get some matching funds with it.
When's this grant, grant gonna be due?
December first, coming up here at weekend end.
We gotta some figures together, you know, so we're gonna have a look at it.
I sure can do that.
We have a lot of faith in you.
Anyway, I'm not gonna commit a bunch of money on the city's behalf, though.
No.
Will not do that. Okay.
Okay, we have one for the community coordinator.
Just that, uh, so we had this committee together of community club members and then Mayor and, and Ben and Whitey were, were on the, the committee to, uh, try to put down the, uh, the job description for this community coordinator, talk a little bit through about, uh, what we would expect of this person, talk through a little bit about suggestions on, on, on how the person could be paid. And what you see is, it's on page eight would be the proposed job description of the community coordinator. This was presented to the, to the community club last Monday night and the community club had, had approved this and they would like to proceed to try to fill that position again. Thought that they got a lot of, a lot of good out of it, uh, a lot of very positive things happened last year. So, again, they, they had approved the, the job description, they would like to see what they could do about filling the position. Pay wise, what they would look at is a, uh, a salaried position, it's actually a contracted position through the community club, that would probably be around eight hundred dollars a month for, for the, uh, for the position. And, uh, the community club has committed money towards that. It ends up being a total of four thousand dollars, which matches the amount of their commitment that they had this year. Okay, it comes from a little bit different, that it's twenty-five hundred dollars from the community club's general fund, five hundred from the, from the rock and run and a thousand dollars from, from the concert series. But in total, there's four, four thousand dollars that, that would match that. The proposal had, had come from our committee that the city should earmark the amount of, of hotel motel taxes that we have. And that's at sixty-two hundred dollars. The city had, had earmarked twenty-five percent of our total hotel motel tax revenues for community betterment, uh, and, uh, economic development. And that's that sixty-two hundred dollars, was twenty-five percent of what we had this year. So we would propose that that would go towards this coordinator position, that'd be the city's merchant. The community club, like I said, had approved this. There's an advertisement out there for the community club to hire this person.
They're gonna hire the person, the city doesn't have no say in who they are.
I think, it'll work through that, uh, we're, we're thinking about that committee structure again, right?
Yeah. Kind of what we were talking about this, is this individual, what the community club would do is determine what events are all coming up there. And what you're, what you would do is have different individuals who would help be the head of these different, certain entities that are gonna be presenting itself. And this person would be there to help the committee on any particular one. What they would do is, for example, if, uh, they needed advertising, they would come a month or two months ahead of, this is what's coming up, this is what we'd like to see from the community club, what can we do to help out, whether it be in advertising. And they would, what the community clubs, the committee would do, plus her'd help get the organization of people to come and help and then whatever else we needed to get going. She wouldn't be running each individual event. She would be the helper, I guess is the best way I could say it. You'd still have your committees on each event and these other, her and his identity, whatever that would be, would, uh, help out in any way we suit. And this way, again, this brings more clout back into the community club, gives them more of a, what we talked about, the umbrella structure over all the events and it's coordinated through, through the community club, the way it should be. And, and as far as, I'm a big believer in this, you know, I kinda pushed it last time. And I think this, this money that's earmarked is not really, I understand it's the city's money, but at least we know where it's going. We've seen some good results with where, with, what's been done. So I think it's, we're on the right track and we can continue to keep everything else. I look at it just for the simple fact that helps us to keep our, our campgrounds full. You know, we've got some real good advertising now, that, that's a big plus for us as a city. So, you know, what else happens is, to me is a bonus. So I think that's, to me, is we're on the right track and I hope we continue to be on the right track. Like I said, we can, we could, we'd get some pretty good results, we don't wanna stop the boat now.
Scott, you got a copy of the ad that went out, it is in this detail, isn't it?
Now, the ad just basically says, uh, you know, are you, are you an outgoing person? Have some communication skills, want to, uh, be involved in the community? It's something real basic. And then the, uh, applications come, come to the city just as the point of collection, okay? Uh, this person contracts, uh, directly with the community club, so they're not at all a city employee. And then, but we get these applications and then we, we, uh, work through our committee structure to kind of, uh, whittle through the applicants and do the interviews and stuff.
That, that money with, that we would, we would give to the community club, now that becomes their, how they pay it out, how they set up the fees and stuff like that, whatever they, however they wanna do it. Actually, the city involvement won't have anything to do with it, like Scott said, other than putting some money into the account and maybe a couple of us will sit on the hiring board and just ask questions, but other than that, this is gonna give the community club some more structure, I feel.
So you're asking for sixty-two hundred bucks, right?
Yes. That would, that would be the city's financial commitment.
I will make the motion up to sixty-two hundred dollars. I will, if you get somebody who thinks worth that kind of money, you don't gotta spend it all.
Well, that's really just gonna be the challenge, is just finding.
Yeah, cause that, that's what I'm worried about, is you put a bunch of yahoos. You're better off than nobody, than a bunch of yahoos. We had the right person on.
I think it's a challenge.
There ain't a lot of those right persons jumping around.
But one of the things that we've got going on, this person won't come in overwhelmed of what we do. We've got the groundwork laid out, so I mean, the plan's there, we just gotta get somebody to help execute the plan as far as I'm concerned.
There'll be a little bit of new events.
Right.
Everything that is, you know, relatively established, the templates, the, you know, formats, you know, we'll need some tweaking, but, you know, shouldn't be anything from, you know, the ground up, so that's.
And the good news, the good news is Emily's still gonna be around, she'll be, she'll...
She's still volunteering.
Sure, exactly. And I think she, she's gonna take that concert series and run with it again. I think she, the way she had talked, is that kinda what, she was kinda anxious about that again, so. So I think we, we've got a good base, so I think we just, this is just to execute the plan.
Somebody's gotta do the legwork. Hopefully we'll find the right one.
Never know until we find out.
Did anybody apply yet?
We, no, we have not. The, uh, comes out in paper tomorrow though, doesn't it?
So you need a second on that?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make that up to sixty-two hundred bucks.
Roll call?
Leeny?
Yes.
Thank you?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Paul and Ron?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that exhaust, that hotel motel, that's, that's the community that needs.
That's, you know, that's what our twenty-five percent was for the year. Fact of the matter is, we've collected it for now something over a year. We have a, a balance in ex, in excess of that right now, so there's still some.
Some community, I mean, meaning.
Yeah. Um, largely because we didn't use, it's supposed to be the seventy-five percent that goes towards, uh, uh, reducing debt. And it wasn't needed to reduce the debt, the debt service wasn't that much, so.
So beyond the twenty-five percent that's sitting in the excess.
Well, although we haven't spent, I don't think we spent anything from, of it. And again, we've been collecting for more than a year, so there's more than the sixty-two hundred dollars there. Available, yeah, it's, it is.
For other things, I mean, not to miss it more for this position, I'm just saying there's still some available for others, marketing type things.
Okay, Jack, you're up.
All right. Back was in the budget this year and, uh, the CAT salesman stopped about three weeks ago and maybe a month, but, uh, he said they're going from a tier three motor to a tier four. January one, you have to meet emission standards for the tier four. He said the CAT was probably gonna go up around ten percent the first of January. So, well, if it's in this budget, they're ten percent, everybody's probably in this five to ten percent range. Just a good guess. So anyways, I had the CAT man look at ours, went scope at it and then I called the John Deere man, he really didn't seem interested. He never called me back. The New Holland, which is basically Case New Holland, they would not bid the specs that I have, cause they don't meet spec. The CAT man said that he couldn't spec a machine, cause they don't offer what we have on our machine. He said, you won't be happy. He said, I have to buy new bucket, new forks, new everything and try to, cause they're not worth nothing to me, nobody else will want them when we... So, basically we're down to one bid. You know, the other one said they would bid, but it's not for what you want. And that's where we're at. And I wasn't gonna bring it up till next June when our warranty was up, but if you can save five or ten percent of your money for six months, that's the main thing I was getting at.
What do you think the cost would be for this equipment? We held on to it for another year, how much would we lose in traded values, you say?
Well, if, if, if you just even the five percent, it would be another five thousand and then, you know, so you're probably figuring, you know, probably another ten thousand, five eight, I would say give or take.
Would we lose what we traded in, I'm sorry, just?
Yeah, that's excellent. I think we paid like eighty something for it.
I, I looked that up as far as what we paid for it originally. We paid sixty-three thousand dollars for it originally. Because at the time, we were trading in this New Holland back, you know, that, that really wasn't nearly, wasn't worth nearly as much on a trade in, so we got a real good, good machine at trade in and, uh, looking, the trade proposal was twenty-nine four.
And I'd be the person who did that.
Yes. We tried to push this off, I think, as, as long as we could.
Well, you're gonna put a lot of wear and tear on it then January, February, March, where you put on the old machine if you think it could still, you know, we, you think we could go January till April with this current machine?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about the machine at all, I was just looking at, if the dollars, you know, if it's in the budget and we can save, you know, save five percent, that's still, you know, we're, you know, we can wait a year too, it's, it don't, I just, the, the new tier emissions came up, so that's the main reason I'm bringing it to you now.
Has anybody, now with these different engines, has anybody got, has anybody got? Has anybody... now with these different engines, has anybody got... is that out on the market yet?
The tier fours?
Yes.
Uh, they came out January first. So...
Well, the add company normally tier four.
Yeah.
Vax tier four. Our Vax is a tier four.
So...
What's the new whole got?
Basically, it's about the same thing. Yep.
Same controls.
Same controls, everything.
How long is it good for?
Probably till, I would say, another... I think you would like to have it done by Christmas, you know, another two or three weeks, I think.
Then how long is the warranty?
Oh, I don't have... I didn't even... It might be, if we wait too long, it might be even a tier-four motor yet. But they're pricing the tier-three. You know, we're getting just like the game. I don't know how far production they're out on machines, but the closer you get to the end of the year, if you put it in the works, it might be a tier-four motor. Because it might not come out till, you know, January. Even though it's a tier-four, there'd be a tier-three bid, is what...
It's on a...
I can see your one to save five or ten percent now, but I mean, our current backhoe will be worth probably just about as much traded in the middle of summer as it will now, when we can put that extra wear and tear on the one we currently got.
Yeah, that's totally...
We figured out the dollars on that, as far as just total cost of what they proposed. It was about twenty dollars an hour, is basically what we'd be paying for this now. I don't know if they've changed their bid based upon hours or not, or if we can get the same trade-in.
How many hours would you typically play, or what would you say?
I would say, with the tax broke, right now, it's got like thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars. You know, usually about three hundred dollars a year, give or take. And the tax was broke for... I don't know how many months it was broke, but they come down and fix it finally, so I suppose it got fifteen hundred to two thousand a month.
When is the warranty out on this one?
Uh, June. June, June. June will be in twelve, or August, somewhere there. The five-year warranty will be up.
So it makes sense to run it through the winter, back and forth, and...
We... that is fine, that is...
I'm just saying...
Yep.
Not that it gets beat up, I mean, not that it's made.
Yeah.
Well, I think that you're looking into stuff like this, though.
Well, maybe we can find out how long the bid's good for, and if we...
On the sheet, it says ten days, but I don't know how long it's really on.
Yeah, they wanna sell land, they're gonna...
I was gone at the meeting, so he was gonna stop in and talk to Scott, so maybe that's what... Maybe he talked to the factory, too, and that's how it was ten days, so...
Who's this through, what's due?
Titan Machinery in Sioux City. Which is basically, I think, it got the whole state idol.
So we want Jack to go back and find out how long the bid's good for, if we can lock the bid in and get it in the spring? Or what? That's what you want, Jim?
Um, I mean, not even... I mean, order it in the spring, but I mean, it's a pretty good machine, you know, I'd like to see us use all we can out of it, and I mean, it'll probably be worth as much as six months from now as it is today, and put the wear and tear of it on to the winter, and then, you know, kind of get as much out of it as we can.
Okay, I don't think that the traded value will be just as much here at a year from now than right now.
Good iron's good iron, that's right. That's good iron.
So should we wait a year, then?
I'd like to take it through the winter, and then... I don't know if I wanna run it a year, because then you're out of warranty, now. I don't know, maybe just wait and see about April and see how the machine's doing. If it starts having a lot of problems, maybe then we'll know.
All right. All right, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thanks for raising our attention, Jack.
You bet.
Okay, proposed electric water sewer rates.
Okay, a couple different... Couple different things, new things that we hadn't talked about last time. But as we walk through the packet, again, if we're on page ten, that's just, again, that same pro forma that we have seen before about in two thousand twelve, proposing that eleven point nine percent increase in revenue. Other than that, there's no changes that had been proposed for any of the two thousand twelve information. If you look at the next page, then eleven, this is, again, something that was presented at the last council meeting, where they're using that three percent differential, so if we're at eleven point nine percent, across the classes, it would be eleven point nine plus or minus three percent. So the lowest would be eight point nine percent, highest would be fourteen point nine percent. And you see how the increases were proposed to be allocated out across the different rate classes. Then we get into the spreadsheet that I prepared on page twelve. And this highlights one different thing that we hadn't discussed last time. What I had listed here as Proposal A was their proposal that they gave us last time. And that is that they came up with rates, as far as what they thought the rates ought to be for each tier. In Proposal A, the rate increase in the higher tier is a larger percentage than what the rate increase is in the first tier. So when we looked at those numbers that the last council made, it made it look like the big user really got proportionally a lot bigger rate increase percentage-wise than with the small user. So I asked them for a proposal that equitably distributes that increase across those two tiers. So he did that, and that's Proposal B. So when you look at Proposal B, and note the difference between Proposal A, if we're in the first rate now, first tier, where the first thousand kilowatt-hours currently are six point nine cents, he had proposed it under Proposal A at seven point five, that would've been a lower percentage, and this would propose at seven point eight five, which would be a consistent percentage, about twelve percent on that rate increase. Whereas on the higher tier, we're at four point seven right now, he'd propose that to go up six point two, a pretty significant increase. And then, in Proposal B, it's at five point three five, and again, that's very consistent, that's about that twelve percent increase then, so that the twelve percent's allocated across both of the tiers. And as you look down at the bottom of the sheet, where you get to, again, what's the impact on the small, the average, or the large user? And you see what... how those percentages are allocated when you compare Proposal A to Proposal B. Under Proposal A, the large user had a much larger percentage increase, whereas under Proposal B, everything is fairly consistent. That makes sense about the different types of rate proposals. You okay, Tony? Is that... you were shaking your head?
No, I'm shaking my head, and I'm sorry.
Oh, no! Oh, no!
He's doing good.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe it's on the beginning.
So I think about this, this brings back to Ben's point at the last meeting, how we're not digging our larger users, and to the point where we're pricing ourselves out of contention, I guess.
Yeah, and you'd see that same thing, then, on the commercial and industrial rates. Actually, no change in industrial, just the commercial rate.
What percent of the users fall to that large user? Is it five percent of our users, ten, twenty?
Oh, five thousand, yeah, I mean, five thousand kilowatt-hours, that's a lot. That's a lot of power for residential. And it's... it would be mainly the folks who have electric heat, so it's just during the wintertime. But that may be ten, fifteen percent of people, maybe more.
That would use five thousand?
During the wintertime. Am I out of line on that, Bill? You know how many electric heat users we got?
I can't even tell you that, Scott.
And I might be overestimating a little bit. But we do have people who have electric heat around town, because back in the day, it was a cheap way to go to eat your house.
Um, Scott, I guess I'll leave you with that.
Okay, just to look at page thirteen, again, this is just comparing that Proposal A to Proposal B for the small, medium, and large users, you can see how the how the allocation is allocated out amongst those Proposal A or Proposal B. Again, it's what had been a real high increase for the large user in the Proposal A. Just the rationale on that, though, I asked NMPP Energy for their rationale on that. And the rationale is that under that higher tier, where the price is less, we can actually be selling power for less than what we would purchase it for. And they said, "When you look at the big picture, you know, you can structure your rates, and the amount of revenue is the same, but philosophically, you have some concerns about ever selling power for less than what you would pay for it." So that was the rationale behind their original Proposal A. And as we talk through Proposal B, he says, "I don't have any concerns about revenues, the revenues would be the same." And we had quite a bit of discussion about the commercial, and again, how that would allocate out amongst those users. So that's page fourteen. See, again, that it's under Proposal B, the increase is more consistent across the small to the average or large user. Under three phases, it did not make any change under the three phases, 'cause there's only one rate tier for kilowatt-hour usage. Now, as you look at the page fifteen, here's the rate comparison that we talked about last time. So we always show Lakeview's current rate versus what we would be under a Proposal A versus what we'd be under Proposal B. And then you see the other utilities that we entered, would be Wall Lake, Auburn, Rita, Mid-American Energy, and then also Raccoon Valley REC. So you'd be able to see really where we compare with those.
With these, though, like Wall Lake, Auburn, Rita, that's their current rate now, that's not what it's proposed to be?
That's their current rate now. And the only one... Auburn is having to look at their rates again, but they're looking at their wholesale power arrangement first. And other than that, the only one who knew that another rate increase was coming is Raccoon Valley. With Wall Lake, actually, Wall Lake, Auburn, and Rita, they all use an energy cost adjustment, so their rates fluctuate a little bit from month to month.
The reason we have to raise the rates is our cost of electricity to us is what's cranking us up.
The driver behind this is cost of wholesale power. You know, this talking point, I think, is very very important. We looked five years ago on what our wholesale power cost was. Wholesale power cost, five years ago, roughly a half million dollars. Five years in the future now, currently, we budgeted one million dollars for power costs. So that's the major driver, is the cost of wholesale power, it's doubled in the past five years.
I just think for residential, we're competitive. Rural, we're really competitive. Commercial, I think we're a little higher, but that's, I mean, next year, they could be what they're proposing, they could be right up with our prices, and, you know, the industrial three phases, and we're doing pretty good with that, that by base rate is commercial and industrial, and I think we're in the heat in there.
F, B?
Proposal B, now, is that what you're talking about?
I guess either one, I mean... You know, I guess for commercial, I don't know. You know, I'd look towards like the middle line, a thousand kilowatt-hour. I mean, I know wintertime's gonna kill me a little warm, but yeah, I'd say probably Proposal B overall.
I think what that shows in Proposal B is that we're treating everybody the same with percentage loss.
Well, and we're kind of going back to where the more you buy, the cheaper it gets, where the other thinking on Proposal A almost kind of was, where the more you use, the more you get dinged.
Which, from an energy efficiency standpoint, that's the way the market is trending now, though.
Yeah.
Is that it may be that you pay more for the more power that you use.
So the question, now, is Proposal B.
You know, that's... Hate to make it sound quite that simple, but yeah, that's kind of where we're at, and from an equity perspective, you know, I think Proposal B looks pretty equitable. So this would... what I'd like to do, then, is that I'd prepare an ordinance, and it'd come back to the council then at the next meeting, so if you can instruct me to prepare an ordinance with Proposal B.
That was your motion?
Sure.
Exactly.
Never in doubt in my mind.
Anyway, man. In a second?
I'll say it, but...
We'll go.
Trader?
Yes.
Spank him?
Yes.
Plus?
Yes.
Lainey?
Yes.
Obolonore?
Yes.
Water or sewer?
Yeah, those... Just looking at that real quickly, you look in the memos on page three, top of page on page three, this is proposing that three point nine percent. And these are the dollars that are generated under that three point nine percent. So that's a eighty-six hundred dollar increase in water, and seventy-five hundred dollar increase in sewer. Okay, what this would propose is base rate today is ten dollars and five cents, this would propose to go to ten twenty. And consumption rate now is four oh five, and we propose to go four ten.
What does this do with water that is being prompted to unincorporate parts?
They still have a... For those who are customers outside the corporate limits, they still pay a hundred fifty percent. So, and that's the way that the code reads, is that it's a hundred fifty percent, so that increase is passed along. So as you look on page sixteen, on that water fund financial recap, and really just looking at the bottom line, it does help help out quite a little bit to have this rate increase, and we can manage to keep a positive cash trying to accumulate a little bit more money in that account. This does not generate sufficient revenue to even, you know, fund our own depreciation, or or to think about capital projects in water or sewer, but it does generate enough revenue in order to keep the account above zero. And hopefully, start to grow a little bit of a balance in there, so...
So then, will there be a longer-term plan to try to get it to a point that it can be, you know, really...
It's also efficient.
It's the...
Because that's, I mean, it's been a struggle
It's been a struggle?
For years, so...
Virtually forever, because the kind of plan of attack has been that we can't save up enough money to do a capital project, so there's always debt, so we're just basically paying debt along the way instead of funding a positive appreciation. I would anticipate that to continue. We can't raise rates high enough to generate a substantial amount of balance in there that you would earmark for a capital project. It's... this would put the water fund at as financially good as it's been for a long time.
This is something that's supposed to automatically happen, right? We already have an ordinance that says we're gonna do it.
We have an ordinance that says we will do this, the council does need to follow through to change the rate.
That's where we plan on our future, so... I'll make that motion.
To prepare the ordinance, so we can... Or to prepare the ordinance, destroy the three quicks?
Yep. Is that what I meant?
Yeah, that's what you meant.
I was confused on that one.
If I have a second.
I guess I'll do that. You can, if you want.
We'll go.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lainey?
Yes.
Bobo Nord?
Yes.
Trader?
Yes.
Us.
Do we have more projects out than you've done in sewer or the water part? The part we're going to have to pay off our debt on?
The big thing will be sewer plant.
Would there ever be a consideration to charge one of them? And they were talking fast about charging one for the sewer. But I think, you know, I haven't really paid it, so, I mean, water's relatively cheap. It's pulling out a ground tree way better than sewer.
That's, you see more and more communities who have to do it that way, where cost per thousand of sewer is higher than cost per thousand of water. And, yeah, like you say, the cost to treat is dramatically, terribly high capital investment. And then you end up paying debt on this for 20 or 30 years.
It's not our choice. I mean, we have to do it to what the state says we have to do it.
You know, for now, as we looked at what that study said we needed to be doing out at the sewer plant, we had that small project with the manhole and the valve, and that valve's supposed to be here any time. And, but other than that, you know, we did a little roughing work out there. We're not too bad out at sewer plant, until the big thing comes along when the DNR says you're going to have to disinfect.
And we're going to do UV disinfection.
Well, yeah, we would need to look through all of them, but everybody certainly seems to be kind of skewing towards UV.
We're able to treat them out of what we're doing. That's our big elephant sitting back there, where he goes.
I mean, I believe electric, you know, you should pay with that cost. Garbage should be, you know, I hate taking from this one to cover this one, and, you know, I mean, probably my utilities, geez, sewer costs a lot, but my water's less, and, you know, everything should be, and that way you can target people with the user fees.
And by and large, we do a pretty good job of that, keeping each proprietary fund to fund itself. You know, we, maybe you can't always say that with electric, because there's a lot of things that electric department funds, primarily me and Kay, 100% out of electric funds, has been for a long time.
No, it doesn't, you know, it's something we're in the future, I'm just thinking, aqua thinking.
Oh, no.
What about the Santa Claus?
Ready for the report?
Oh, just that I want to talk through the budget timeline here real quick. It's on page 18. It's the same process, I'm really interested in the process that we would like to do for budget. This would propose to be the same type of process that we've used for the past years, where department heads will get their inventory, their needs assessment together, and present that to the council. I would propose we're going to do that at the December 19th council meeting. Gus will still be around then. Gus is going to head south for the months of January and February, so we'd like to get Gus at least a little involved in a lot of that stuff. My main question, I think, is, deals with this council goal setting session. Would we like to do another council goal setting session this year? You know, I think we ought to do one sometime, but do we do it during the budget process? With, again, the question being Gus will be gone.
I hate for him to miss too much of the budget. It's so exciting.
He'll miss the entire budget.
We've done the goal settings before.
Yep. And that's, you know, I think some good things come out of that, when you can just have some discussion.
Not that it really matters to me, but it is a really good time to reflect on what had been accomplished in the previous year and really kind of set the stage for what, you know, needs to be accomplished. So especially with, you know, remember, and how even though it's not going to participate, you can still participate, you know, you can still fill out the worksheets and do some preparatory effort, his inputs.
Well, unless I hear otherwise, we're going to kind of work through this process. And was the process okay for you? Have enough council involvement? Because I know that budget time is not everybody's favorite deal, but it is important.
Got to have a plan.
Well, it's really the time of year where we set priorities for what happens in the following eight to the month. Okay. Just briefly, we were supposed to have a public hearing tonight on to adopt our city code. And I messed up and published the wrong date for a public hearing. There really is no great rush to try to push that through tonight anyway, never get caught on a technicality, so we'll just republish with the proper date, and we'll have it at the next council meeting, and we'll get the code adopted then. On the Boulder's Drive thing, the only update really is that Dave King is getting together with Dave Stern and Mike, the inspector, they're all coming up tomorrow. So they do have a meeting set, and that's for tomorrow. They're coming up tomorrow.
What time?
They were meeting out there in the morning.
Has over the six versus 12 anymore?
Yeah, we've done hash, and we're.
I thought so, so what's the purpose of the meeting?
I think you made that pretty clear at one point. I don't know. Sometimes I haze myself.
Well, I mean, we kind of know where we're at, it's 12.
That's where we're.
So what are they hoping to accomplish then?
I'm sure Dave wants one more shot at, or Dave King wants one more shot at our engineer.
Convincing the engineer?
Or at least wanting to know the rationale behind that.
You still think we're going to have that in this year?
I would suggest we wouldn't do it.
I would think that would be a terrible idea.
Budget's cracked.
I wonder if we should take bids and get another company, and if he doesn't get it done first thing this spring, we have another company do it, instead of they'll do the bonding company.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Just let them know that that's what we're going to do.
You can do that anyways.
Sure.
That's what I said last year, we're going to tell them, right?
I mean, if we got a hole to speed to the fire, we were in the same predicament 14 months ago. But, you know, yeah, now we got six more broken panels since then, so.
I'd like to tell them tomorrow what we're going to do. What time's the meeting?
Dave just said they're meeting tomorrow morning. I didn't ask what time.
I'd make that call in the morning.
I think I'll be around tomorrow morning.
There you go.
We'll get a marine. Start on the beach.
Just a little bit more on Eighth Street Sewer up there with Tuna Creek. We had a sanitary issue, and it's out on Dennison Beach, that required that we needed to have this area televised. It actually deals with a potential septic system out there and whether there's a connection into the sanitary on this line out there at Dennison Beach. So we had them come in and televise that, but while they were here, we had them come televise that Eighth Street 1-2.
I see them up there.
And it's flowing, flowing fine, doesn't have any problems with flow restrictions right now. There was a lot of comments on, a lot of, basically a lot of roots, almost every pipe joint, there's some roots there, so.
Want to get a price on some line?
Looking at some options there as far as, but again, everything's flowing fine.
I thought we dumped in that stump killer.
Right.
That didn't work?
We ripped killed that thing, yeah.
It kills them, but they're still, we did that one in September, I think it was?
That was June, end of June.
But, you know, they're still, till they rot out, you know, they'll still hang there. I mean, we didn't clean the sewer when we videotaped it like we did out to Dennison Beach. We had that one cleaned first because we knew that one hadn't been cleaned for a year or two. So that one hasn't been cleaned since September, or June, I guess.
So what was this Dennison Beach situation, Jack? This kind of interesting.
Found the lateral. There is a sewer tap to that property, so I went and talked to Mike today, and he's going to do some more checking, and.
There's potential that one of those cabins out there has been hooked into a septic system, never hooked into a sanitary.
The leach field might, you know, it might be tied into the sewer. I mean.
This seems to be kind of a strange deal. They've been having some problems out there, and only because of these problems has it come up that they were actually cleaning out a little septic tank, so. We'll get that thing straightened out yet and make sure that they're attached onto the sanitary. You don't have a choice in that.
We're not aware?
We're not aware. We've built them for sanitary sewer for decades. And my guess is that it is hooked in somehow because they've never had problems up until this past, you know, year or two or whatever, and that could just be that they're having problems with this, what is probably a line that goes from this leach field or into the One other, we're going to discuss this building, lifting up at Blackhawk Development. Before we get there, though, Sack County League meeting is December 14th at Odepole, and historically, we've had spouses attend this, if you'd like to have your spouse attend, but I'll need to respond, so give me an RSVP number. Barry?
I'm not working at night.
You have to.
I guess, too. I mean, what is it, December 14th? What kind of night are we talking on?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, over Odepole.
I should know.
Going?
It'll either be in hospital or have a vacation.
Really?
I didn't say no.
What do you mean, no?
Cardiopulmonary.
Ryan, what do you want for Christmas?
DVD gun.
We already broke a potato gun this yesterday, so.
Attaboy.
Oh, God, Tony's not very happy with you right now.
He knows he's programmed with you.
It's easy. Remember how we talk? It's easy. I don't think so.
I just want you 10,000 degrees.
I'd like to work at the museum.
You're on for Sack County League.
We need to bring a.
We need to bring an auction guest again, so.
I've got another chest.
Do you?
Big one.
Want to do something similar like we did last year? That worked out great, that one. We'll fill the chest.
Just remind you, somehow we're probably good, right?
Okay.
Remember your email?
Yeah.
We got meetings here going.
Oh, yeah, we'll have.
About one meeting before you know it.
Gus, are you going?
Oh, God, Gus, you got to go. I don't know. Emily.
Okay.
This one's kind of fun here.
They're all fun, Gus, a lot of pictures. Everybody wants to sit with the Lakeview crowd, but.
You make enough copies there. What I handed out was, this is a newly updated sketch of what was, what is supposed to happen out at that construction site at Blackhawk Development. So this is, oh, God, what's their name out there, Jack?
Wegner.
Wegner. David Kelly Wegner. It has block foundations in there right now. We issued a building permit to Wegner's at the last city council meeting, and we issued a permit for a 36 by 36 structure. And the structure meets the city code. Okay, so we could issue a building permit for it meets the city code. Out at Blackhawk Development, they do have some private covenants out there, restrictive covenants on the land, and has some things like minimum square footage, excluding a garage, and then, of course, has stuff regarding setbacks, but it also has stuff regarding use. And the main one on the use is that you couldn't have a, like a standalone garage on your property prior to having your house there. So the issue has come up, you know, about the use of this property. Is it truly residential? Is it just going to be a guest house? Is it a storage area? Is it just kind of a party place? This is right next door to their existing house. They, Wegner's, are moving up here full time. So a lot of those issues had been brought up, and concern been raised by the Blackhawk Development folks whether that meets their covenants or not. So from a city perspective, you know, we were asked with, why doesn't the city at least help us out on these covenant issues a little bit? Why, if you can't enforce them, why don't you at least tell them what they are, you know, or whatever else it might be? But just that restrictive covenants are rules placed on the property that are strictly private, and then they're privately enforced. So that's always been the city's response when we hear anything in this regard, is it's a private deal and it needs to be privately enforced. So as of today, though, this is a new plan for that area, which would then be a 36 by 48. Does propose to have kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, this great room, and a garage, but it has enough space that meets their space criteria. But I bring this up to you more, not just about this specific instance, but again, this concept of restrictive covenants and how much the city ought to be involved in either informing an applicant that they're there, or, you know, potentially assisting with any enforcement, or do they got to sign off on them before we issue a building permit? Like you say, our practice in the past has been, it's been private and exclusively private, and we haven't had any involvement.
And I'm pretty happy with this.
Keep our nose out of it. So this will take the other problem from this thing, right?
It would amend their existing building permit. It will be fine, you know, it doesn't, there's no city regulation in that regard, so it would be fine. But I sure would like to get an officially amended permit.
I think on behalf of George Kraus and some of the other people out there, including myself, and also the people that are in the Rhodey addition or that area, if we could have the building permit application include language that doesn't put any liability on to the city, but include language that, are you aware of, you know, any restrictive covenants that we could put on this application so that the owner has to identify those and the contractor, so that Scott can at least give notice to somebody. For example, if half of the people are gone, or I'm the only one around out there, somebody will contact me and say, hey, you've got a construction going up, and this should be reviewed by then the president of the association out there. Or at least give notice to the association, because it's possible not to have notice. Something can be built, you know, quickly.
Do they do that when we do the board of the lot?
I'm just saying, they should be aware of the covenants when about that.
Well, they are aware of it, and these folks were aware of it, but they weren't going to, they weren't going to follow it until George did some talking to them. And so when the building permit is submitted, all I'm asking, I think that what George is asking is, isn't there a way to reword this application to include any language about restrictive covenants? And we know, I mean, when Darrell Eishite approves these, he knows already that area has restrictive covenants, and we're a small town, and he also knows out at Rhodey addition they have restrictive covenants.
Can we put a pack on each individual covenant or place or whatever, and have to make your own building permit then? Or do we just stay out of it?
Yeah. Trying to think this through a little bit, Ben. Because they don't have an official permit or anything, but they do have an inspector out at Blackhawk Development. And so that's Brent Peters, and Brent is supposed to talk with each person who's doing a project and really gauge what it is they're doing, and do they meet all of the setbacks and everything. Because in their case, their covenants, and specifically like their setbacks, is more restrictive than what the city says.
Could it be something where he has to pass you that first, and then comes this?
Yeah, that's, as a matter of my personal procedure, I guess that's the way we're going to do things, you know, before it comes to the city council. We get a building permit out there before it comes to the city council, we'll have approval from.
So if you just take the building permit, add a line in there that says that somebody has checked the restrictive covenants. It doesn't matter, we could still vote yes, I don't give a crap what it says, I never, at least we know that they checked it, or at least they say they.
They know they're aware of it.
You know, something that just, one little line that says you're aware of any restrictive covenants, something like that.
Because I can tell you that the initial building permit didn't look like this at all, you know, and.
No, it was, it was this. It, there's the, there's the sketch of a 36 by 36 building.
But they could still market that they knew about covenants and not do it anyway. It isn't enough to ask to enforce it, right?
No, I think what all they're asking is, is just to give notice so that if, if you get something that you know doesn't meet the covenants, because it doesn't have any running water in it, that there's no plumbing, there was no nothing. It was intended to be a garage until George stepped in. And it's a lot easier to step in before you have to sue and somebody's already got something constructed. And then it's very difficult.
But having said that, I would not know that they couldn't put a structure out there that didn't have any water, you know?
You do know.
In that case, it's true, yeah, but, but, so there's covenants there. There's covenants out at Harbor Drive, which I don't know nothing of. Covenant's in dying circle. And there's, I don't know where else there might be covenants.
Well, I think if you could just give then a copy to the person who's president of that association.
We don't know who the hell they are in terms of time, okay?
Well, couldn't it just be upon the homeowner to go get the signature of the applicant, you know, development?
If this guy knew about the covenants, he wouldn't do it anyway.
But I'm saying if he had to go to the development inspector, one of them, like use a, one of that personalize.
We, we know that Blackhawk Development has one. I, I don't know if it's our...
I don't think it should give us to enforce it.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying it'd be better for the homeowner to at least have obtained the signature or whatever that's worth.
It doesn't cost them to put in a much building.
No, and it, and, you know, there are, there certainly is the chance here for some better cooperation. You know, I, I can absolutely see that and that, that's why I say at a minimum, you know, my personal policy would, would change so that we get their building inspector involved before we do this, you know? Because you think back how, how this thing happened with the, with this last building permit. It was, yep, the building permit showed up. He came in and got a building permit on Friday. I happened not to be here. The building permit came in already approved by Darrell on Monday. You know, and really knew nothing of the, of the deal. We ran it through the council that night.
And I know that Brent Peters tried to give all of this gentleman and there was no return on phone calls whatsoever. So George just chased him down.
And that same thing could happen again. I mean, watch your luck.
Absolutely. I mean, it...
Shouldn't the real estate guy tell the guys that you can't do this?
The contractor?
Yeah, that doesn't do them good either.
George stopped and said, what are you doing? What are you building? He says, it's a garage, which is against the covenants.
You know, lots are left out there.
Or quite a few more.
Is there?
Maybe.
Well, we can put a line in there that says, do you know about the covenants?
Or maybe a signature by somebody who's in the association or, you need to know an association or covenants and then they have a signature off or signed up by them. Because, you know, this gentleman's first statement is, this city signed off.
Did he know our covenants?
Yeah.
And I think all they're asking for is just a little notice, unique copies.
Does that mean you gotta take building permit, put it on your voice?
Yeah, I told Scott.
Give me some language where, you know, you could just put that in there, but...
We're gonna spend all day chasing the president of the city. So there's government out there.
But the homeowner should, really, I mean, it's not the issue.
Maybe just take it out of the car and sign it down there.
I know. I don't think they have a problem with chasing down or filing a lawsuit. I don't think that was a problem. I think the problem was, you know, isn't, isn't there gonna be some cooperation from the city? We should have notice of something that's coming through. I mean...
Yeah, I would tell you this. We issued the, the permit. We heard from the contractor and, and he called asking about the covenants out there and said, you gotta talk to, to Brent Peters, you know? We, we do refer him on to the proper place.
Best you know.
True.
And that's up to them then to follow through and that is check up with them on that.
It's up to the whole association and legal ideas or whatever it's gonna be, things. Put something.
Anyway, give me, give me some language on that then. A little bit so it squeezes in there.
They're really, really small.
Are you sure?
That's it.
Here.
We'll do it here.
I'll make it.
Do it again.
I'll second it.
You have it?